Good morning, everyone. Welcome to Perth County Council, the second day of May. I'd like to call our meeting to order. As we do our moment of reflection, please remember the family of Barb McLean. Barb was a warden in Perth County in 2006, and she passed away. Please remember her family. Thank you. We have our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that Perth County is situated on the traditional land of the Onanasha Bay, who have a longstanding relationship with the land and water throughout the region. We honour and respect the history, languages, and culture of the diverse Indigenous, Matia, and Inuit people who call this territory home. As a county, we have a responsibility for reconciliation and the continued stewardship of the land on which we live and work. Okay, if you have a covenry interest, you can declare that now or as we move along. We need to approve the agenda. Is there anything anyone wishes to add or change? If not, then we have a motion that the May 2nd, 2024 agenda be approved. Moved by councillor Acheson, seconded by councillor Gassenberg. All in favour? Carried. Okay, there are 37 consent agenda items. Is there anything anyone has questions on? Are they, like, pulled? Councillor Gassenberg?
Good morning, Mayor Warden Eggers. Thank you. There are four items on this consent agenda that have drawn my interest and that I'd like to raise with the council. So I'll cite the numbers for you. Item 6.18, item 6.26, item 6.28, and item 6.36.
6.28, 6.36, 6.8, and?
6.18, sorry, and 6.36.
6.18.
I want to name this person.
Yeah. Okay, anyone else? No? Okay. So then the council receives the consent agenda items, 6.1 to 6.37, with the exception of 6.8, 6.18, 6.26, and 6.28. No?
Sorry, 6.18, 6.26, 6.28, and 6.36.
And not 6.8, right? Sorry. Okay, 6.18, 6.26, 6.28, and 6.36. Okay, and that we approve April 18, 2024, council minutes. Moved by councillor Tinkowski, seconded by councillor McDermott. All in favour? Carried. Okay, so the first one, Todd, 2.28.
Yep, thank you. So the municipality of Wawa has drawn attention to the fact that as the next sort of intensive deadline for accessibility in the Accessibility for Ontarians with Disabilities Act is 2025, there are still substantial gaps, apparently according to an independent report on this matter across the province. And that letter to the province, a resolution of their council, suggests that, in fact, the province may want to think about trying to put some money into it to support moving towards greater accessibility compliance. And I believe that that is an appropriate request that this council could endorse. So I'm suggesting that we endorse the letter from Wawa, encouraging the province to come forward with funds to support compliance with AMDA 2025 deadlines.
Okay, so you move that. Moved by councillor Gassenberg. Do we have a seconder? Deputy Warden Callum, any questions? Councillor Acheson?
It's a worthy cause, councillor Gassenberg, but when all these regulations came out a number of years ago, and this was in 2025 as the deadline for full accessibility, the province did throw a pile of money to make it accessible. I don't know, Perth South used it a lot somewhere, erect facilities and everything else. And they had to put a fair bit of money in the back to get it going on this, so. Like, I will support this, but I'm just thinking, like, a lot of municipalities had a chance to get out of it. Maybe ever.
I mean, it's difficult, if I might. It's difficult to say when the runway looks long, sometimes you don't act as prudently as you should. When the rain finally comes, you know you need to address these things, right? And we understand that there's a whole lot of economic value and social value to supporting accessibility provisions. So this, to me, makes some sense.
Okay, all in favour? Carried. Okay, and then 6.26, Hastings County Sustainable Infrastructure Funding for Small Rural Municipalities.
Right, this one certainly draws our attention because all of our municipalities are sort of dealing with infrastructure deficits, you know, whether the number is 10,000 or less, which is what's referenced in the note from the municipality that originated this, or our sizes, which are just slightly larger. There does seem to be a bit of a difficulty on the part of governments to recognise that we too have housing needs and housing gaps, and that there are infrastructure gaps associated with both trying to support housing development and to retain usual rural services and facilities. So I think, you know, notionally, trying to put forward a resolution that calls on Ontario and the federal government to look at infrastructure funding in a more sustainable and predictable fashion, especially given that seeming capital cliff that we're facing over the next 10 years, makes a whole lot of sense as well. And this, in some ways, is part of that bigger initiative, I think, that AMO has launched, which is to include or encourage the province, at least, to undertake a review of economic and social sustainability. So to me, this one is also a relevant item for us to add our voice to. And I'll move that.
Okay, do we have a seconder? Councillor Tinkowski comments? Councillor Acheson?
Question, another good point, councillor Gassenberg. But maybe Corey can answer this question. A lot of the infrastructure money you get is based on your population. Do they still use that factor?
Through the warden, though they're moving towards more of a look at the infrastructure in particular areas, such as the Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund, they're looking at certain values as an indicator of allotment of funding for each individual municipality versus population-based. So they're moving.
I've thought that for a while. I think that just completely slaughters the smaller municipalities.
As well as the northern municipalities with their infrastructure and the population base up in.
Yeah.
So that is how the formula has gone. In Perth County, we've seen our Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund decrease based on this new formula.
Councillor Tinkowski?
Thanks, Warden. Through you to councillor Kassenberg's point, this issue was raised at the forum that was held last week, hosted by Perth County Federation of Agriculture, MPP Matt Ray, and federal MP John Nader, both attended. And this very subject was brought up in the form of, it used to be a one-third, one-third, one-third funding partnership. So they were encouraged, our upper-tier representatives were encouraged to restore that model of funding for the very reason that infrastructure demands are great and the funds available are not. So we're trying our best at the local level, but we still need upper-tier help in that regard.
Okay, all those in favour? Carried. Okay, then we go to 6.28, Municipality of St Charles Household Food Insecurity.
You're gonna get tired of hearing my voice here, I guess. My apologies for finding so much of interest in here. This was a resolution from the municipality of St Charles, which is up in the north, near the region of Sudbury, the area of the city of Greater Sudbury. And clearly, the public health unit up there has done some interesting work and brought forward a recommendation pertaining to food and household food insecurity. The premise is that when the province is looking at various services, social services in particular, that it should be considering that the actual local conditions in terms of food costs and et cetera. And this makes a lot of sense, actually, if you think about it. If you're going to have social service delivery, there's a certain lack of wisdom, in my opinion, to having a sort of one-size-fits-all. You know, a person in Toronto receiving social services is different than a person in the municipality of St Charles, it would appear, and is different than a person in Perth County receiving social services supports. We know that there's variation, of course, in food costs and even food availability. And, you know, the further north you get, the more dire food availability can get in terms of fresh fruits and vegetables. And so there's a certain beauty or grace, if you will, in the call from the public health unit in Sudbury area towards trying to index or understand from local factory data the costs of being, therefore, adjusting various support service offerings to that so that people can eat in a healthy way, even if they are, as we might say, the poor amongst us. So I'm going to move that we endorse this. I think there's been some recent good data from our own public health unit on this matter as well.
Okay, so moved by councillor Gassenberg. Do we have a seconder? Councillor McDermott, any more questions, comments? All in favour? Carried. Okay, and the last one, Loyalist Township Public Health Autoritors.
Yeah, so this one, and I'm not sure, maybe I should have checked in with clerk Sager, but, you know, there seems to be a little bit of confusion from the province from some of the signals that have been sent about drinking water testing and funding of same. And certainly, that is of grave interest to Perth County, given that so many of us live with well-water systems and the province is suggesting. And it's unclear. The last story I read about this, the minister was kind of non-committal and suggested that, in fact, perhaps there wasn't going to be any change. But I think we need to make sure that we fire the warning shot across the province as well, that we think that drinking well safety is important and that the traditional model of subsidising or supporting the costs of well testing is important in rural communities like ours. So again, I'd like to move a resolution of support for that particular item 6.36.
Okay, seconder? Councillor Acheson, comments? Councillor McDermott?
I thought we passed this at the last meeting. Didn't?
Sure, I thought we doubled it one way. I should have was thinking it was.
Yeah, Perth South, I think, previously.
Yeah.
Different than this one.
Well, it's definitely important because if you're living in a rural area, only one place you would go to get your water test, and that's the public health unit. Most people wouldn't know where to take it elsewhere.
In fact, if I might, I have heard from local businesses in North Perth that are on well water, and they do have to absorb the costs of these lab tests for their water services and offer in their businesses, if they're offering water as a part of the solution set of their total offerings. And the cost of the lab tests, according to at least one reporter to me, have almost doubled in the last three years. So businesses that are already sort of having to fend for themselves on this are seeing substantial increase in prices and a narrowing of their lab options. They think private labs just aren't out there. And those that do have realised that there's an opportunity here to charge quite a bit of money for these tests.
Okay.
So honestly, I knew we'd dealt with it once. I thought it was maybe in Perth South. Was it here?
So through the warden, we did deal something similar to this, which was the Asalba Bay field, which was just specific to the free well-water testing. This, I think, is a little bit more broad and has a bit more coverage than just the resolution that was passed by council to send a letter of support just with respect to the well-water testing specific. A little bit more broad, bigger scope.
Okay, all those in favour? Carried. Okay, thanks, Todd. Okay, we have no public meetings, no public hearings, and no delegations this morning. So we'll move to staff report. And the first staff report is under the CAO, and that's Perth County 2023 Annual Report. Laurie, the floor is yours.
Thank you, through the warden. Good morning. And I'm very pleased to present our 2023 annual report for your information. It's the third annual report produced by the county. It's summarised in a digestible document. It contains the highlights of just some of the major initiatives completed by the county in 2023. It's an important communication tool that we use to increase transparency in educating the public about municipal operations and strategic priorities. So that aligns nicely with the county's public engagement framework to achieve the operational transparency. It's not intended to be a comprehensive list of all the work accomplished by the staff throughout the year, but instead showcases major initiatives and how our county works, how the team works across the organisation together to achieve the goals set out in the strategic plan. I'm very proud of the fine work staff accomplish each year, and they contribute to the annual report. It's an excellent way to celebrate those collective achievements. And following this meeting, we'll post this on the county's website in order to promote it to staff and to the public. We will be bringing a mid-year report this year on the progress for the 2024 strategic plan goals. And you'll see this particular document we've added in, you know, the county council information on the governance of the county. And then the goals are listed in terms of the icons here so that it's easily referenced. And we continue that through our budget documents. So we've kind of tried to tie them all together. So it's for your information and happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Okay, questions or comments? No, then we have a motion that council receives, Perth County 2023 Annual Report. Report for information. Moved by councillor McKenzie, seconded by councillor McDermott. All in favour? Okay, the next item is delegation of authority by law amendment. Laurie, okay. Andrea's gonna come up to the table as well.
Thank you, through the warden. This is a joint report that Andrea and I have prepared with regard to a request for council to update the delegation of authority by law that we have with a small amendment that would grant the manager of planning or her designate a temporary one-time extension of three months for draft approvals to plans and subdivision condominium plans. And that will allow us an administrative efficiency when matters come forward that we require additional time to process and align with council's schedule. So I can pass it over to Andrea to speak to why we need that particular extension. And it's rarely used. Council can always rescind any delegation that they provide to staff. There are laws in the municipal act that say what we cannot, what you cannot as council delegate. You can't delegate to staff to pass an official plan amendment, an official plan, zoning bylaws, things like that. So Andrew, if you want to speak about the extension and how that's gonna help you process that?
Thank you. So through the warden, yeah, just to add quickly to Laurie's points. Basically, what happens is we give draft plan, or sorry, council gives draft plan approval on condominiums and subdivision plans. And usually, it's for a three-year period of time. And often, what happens is we have developers coming in right before the lapsing date and asking us for an extension, which we would take the extension to council. But what has happened in a specific case that has just come up is we don't have enough time to get it to the West Perth council and then get it to county council before it lapses. And so we don't have any concerns with supporting an extension for this development. And so in the meantime, we'd like to grant a temporary interim extension before we can get it before council. If we don't do that, it lapses. And unfortunately, the applicant has to start the whole application process from scratch, which takes, is, costs a considerable amount to the applicant. It's timely. And then it also uses up a significant amount of staff time, municipal staff and county staff. And then also comes before council multiple times again. So it's just an interim measure. And then when we would bring the actual report to council that speaks to the request to extend the lapsing date, then we would explain to council that we had, I had granted an interim three-month temporary extension. And again, like Laurie had said, it's a one-time thing. And it's just simply to buy the applicant some time.
Okay, thank you, ladies. Any questions or comments? Councillor Gassenberg?
Sort of looking at a few trade in today's agenda, your analysis of some of the recent provincial proposals. There's this use-it-or-lose-it tool that is being introduced or proposed to be introduced at this point. How does that intersect with this request you're making?
So through the warden, to councillor Gassenberg's question. So yes, the user-lose-it proposed changes to the legislation is that municipalities will be required to require a lapsing date. It usually is around three years. That's fairly common. A lot of municipalities already do that. We already do that in places like this. And it's the intention there is not tie up servicing capacity. So once you basically allocate your capacity to a specific subdivision, if they never lapse and they sit there for decades, they're holding up that capacity, right? And so that would prevent that from continuing to happen. In this case, when we provide reports to council requesting an extension to a lapsing date, we would explain to council that we think this proposal is making progress. It's moving forward. They've started clearing their conditions. In some cases, they'll have already registered phases of the planned subdivision. And it's just, it would be to allow the, preventing the lapsing from those subsequent phases from occurring. And then also with respect to the user-lose-it tool, any plans of subdivision, I think it's pre-1995, that didn't have lapsing dates, they will come up now. If we don't extend their lapsing dates, they'll come up and they'll lapse again, so not to hold up capacity.
Jesus, 30 years.
Okay, other questions or comments? Councillor Acheson?
We actually have some plans that might be pre-95. But that's almost 30 years. Like you'd think, something would be done by now.
We have one in Perth East that's pretty old.
Yeah.
And it's coming up now. It's been sitting in the books for a long time.
So through the warden, to councillor Acheson's question, there are, I don't have an actual number in Perth County, how many would exist. I do know that there are old plans of subdivisions that are kicking around. And yeah, because back in the day, we didn't apply lapsing dates. They just kind of hang around. And the problem is, too, is a lot of them don't meet our current zoning bylaw requirements. There isn't necessarily, yeah, servicing capacity available. It's not necessarily something that we would consider good planning anymore. So it is nice that those are, that that user-lose-it tool is coming up and allowing us to take a look at those again.
Okay, anyone else? Questions or comments? If not, we have a motion for.
One last question. So you say you've got one that's maybe 30 years old. So I know when we were looking for more land in Perth South, they said we have to have the need for that land. So if you've got that piece of property that's always already designated for development and it sat there for 30 years, or 25, or even 20, and had absolutely nothing done with it, just that that restricts the municipality from adding more land or trying to do something with somebody who is willing to do something. Like, I'm kind of struggling with this one, to be honest with you.
In response to that, yes. So when we did the comprehensive review, we would have evaluated each of those lands. So if it's a draft-approved plan of subdivision, we consider them vacant lands. And so then the Watson report says there's a requirement for 243 hectares, I believe the number is. And from that, they, sorry, they arrived at that number because they would have subtracted all the vacant lands that are already available for development in the municipalities. So yes, it ties up that.
The potential may have nothing done with them.
Exactly.
That is restricted. Okay.
Laurie?
Thank you, through the warden. So the request for the delegation of authority is minor in nature. This is administrative. And it will allow staff to bring that forward to council so it'll be council that makes the decision on the actual extension of the plan approval. So whenever we bring you delegation of authority, it has to be minor in nature. And this is purely administrative. It allows Andrea to do her job and have it processed appropriately for you. Takes away the need for us to request a special council meeting for one item. So it will be back in council's hand.
Okay, councillor Gassenberg?
Just one more simple question. Do we, when these proponents are coming up to a lapse date, do we notify them? Is there any kind of notice that's given to them saying, hey, you're getting awfully close to the end here. You better do something.
Through the warden to that question, my understanding is that that has not been a practice here at Perth County in notifying applicants when their approvals are gonna lapse. I do know from experience in working in other municipalities, it has also not been a common practice, basically for the reason that if one remiss, then it falls on, it's our, you know, it's on us. It's our onus. So that's, it's been a common practice in many municipalities to leave it up to the property owner.
Okay, anything else? If not, we have a motion that council receives, report titled delegation of authority by law amendment. And the council approved the amendment to the delegation of authority by law to provide that the manager of planning or designate may grant a temporary one-time extension of three months for draft approval to plans of subdivision and condominium plans. Moved by councillor Acheson, seconded by councillor Orr. All in favour? Carried. Okay, we're going to move on to planning and make the first. Item is the initial review of Bill 185, Item is the initial review of Bill 185, cutting red tape to build more homes. Andrea, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So council has received this report as of, I should say, since 2021. You'll see in my report, there's been at least 10 bills that the province has brought forward addressing matters relating to land use planning. It's made it challenging to be able to pivot, to meet all of the requirements and to stay on top of them. And then as of April 10th, Bill 185 came forward, which I'm sure council is, is well aware of. The legislation proposes to amend 15 various acts, including the Development Charges Act, the Municipal Act and the Planning Act. In addition to revising the, a 2024 draft provincial planning statement was also released. And that is to replace the 2023 draft provincial planning statement that was previously released. The provincial planning statement will include the growth plan for the Greater Golden Horseshoe as well. So it'll basically amalgamate the, the current PPS as well as the growth plan. And then the, the difficult or challenging parts that a lot of municipalities are facing that I've been in contact with, there's been a significant amount of discussion with the planning group within the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus and a number of other planning directors groups as well. Just that we have had very little time to respond to or review all of the changes. They're very, very, they're significant and far reaching. So it's a broad amount of changes. And we were asked to provide comments to the province by May 12th. And so as I'm sure you can imagine, that was challenging to do the review and turn around and get a report before council too. So what I did is I provided an overview. And then I, I specifically chose what's, as the manager of planning for Perth County, what I saw as concerns within Perth County relating to these legislative changes, but also in consultation with the other planning director groups. And again, the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus group. So just an overview quickly, I won't go into each of the details. If council has questions after about any of the specific changes, we can talk about that. But just quickly, so some of the changes that are, that are more noteworthy that affect land use planning would be the elimination of third party appeal rights, of official plan amendments and zoning by law amendments. As council knows, there's already been the removal of third party appeal rights, on minor variances, consents and draft plan of subdivision approvals. And so this would add official plan amendments and zoning by law amendments. There is new appeal rights for settlement area expansion requirements. There's removal of barriers for additional residential units. There's the use it or lose it tools that we spoke about. The removal of the fee refunds introduced through Bill 109. So that's with respect to planning applications that aren't meeting the prescribed timelines. There was a requirement that municipalities would have to pay back those application fees to the applicants. And so that has, that legislation has, is being proposed to be walked back. There is the removal of mandatory pre consultation process on planning applications. There's the proposal to exempt community service facilities and post secondary institutions from planning requirements. And the proposal to permit up to two additional residential units in, in prime agricultural lands. And then I should note too, that we haven't seen any of the associated regulations for these, these proposed amendments to the legislation. And so for example, with respect to the additional residential units, we understand that regulations will follow, but we haven't had an opportunity to see them. So we would also, we're also hoping that the province will give us an opportunity to review them and provide comments when they come out instead of just, just passing them. I have to say there are a lot of positive changes in, in Bill 105, or sorry, 185. I think that the, for example, the removal of the fee refunds will allow us to run applications concurrently again. So council will not have to review the same application or the same development proposal through multiple applications three separate times, which will be great. It also streamlined the process. Also, yeah, I mean, the, the fee refunds, we haven't had to issue any refunds. We've been staying on top of the, the applications and meeting those timelines. But I mean, it's, it's nice in the event that an application, an agency comment comes up that potentially causes concerns and then it's just pushed before council, council's forced to make that decision. So that kind of gives us some, some room to move there too. Definitely also supportive of the additional residential units in prime agricultural lands or areas. I think that there's an opportunity for retirement dwellings as well as farm labor dwellings. So that'll give some ease to, to those proposals as well. So then with respect to, to the review that's been undertaken, my comments to council would be, and, and my ask is that we submit comments to the province. Asking that we extend, they extend the commenting period. Right now, the comments are due on May 12th. And so it would be nice if we had a bit more time to review and provide a more fulsome review to council and provide those comments. We also have concerns with respect to the appeal rights for settlement area expansions. So the way that this legislation reads is that private individuals could apply for settlement area expansions at any point in time. And council would be, would be asked to make that decision. Right now, it goes through the comprehensive review process. And as council is well aware, we go through the land allocation process. We do, you know, we consider where servicing is available. We consider what's a logical extension of servicing and, and a logical, logical extension, good planning to a, a settlement area. And so that right would be potentially removed in that someone could apply for an extension. Council could determine that they don't think it's a, it's a good idea. Planning staff would, would agree with that potentially. And then the applicant could appeal it. And we feel that this could be a concern from an infrastructure perspective because then the settlement area has to get that infrastructure out to that development. It could be costly and it makes it difficult for us to plan ahead. So that's, that was the, our, the second item that we, we highlighted. And then the third is the, is lot creation in prime agricultural areas. So the way that the provincial planning statement has been drafted is it allows for additional residential units in prime agricultural areas. But we're not quite sure if it's intentional or happened inadvertently. But it appears as though each of those additional residential units, if they met the requirements of the PPS, then they could potentially be severed. And so the concern there too is that, you know, that potentially causes agricultural land loss. It'll drive up the land prices in agricultural areas. And then it also makes it difficult for livestock facility operations to expand in the future because you have additional MDS arcs. And so those are, my recommendation is that we bring forward those comments to, to the province at this point in time. And I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Okay, questions? Counselor Kastenberg?
Less questions, more comments. I think first applause on the position that you've outlined here on settlement area expansions. I think that these are things that need to be done with care and planning process that is expert and for the province to, to sort of open that can of worms up and allow for frankly, willy nilly development does not feel right to me. So I'm, I'm certainly supportive of offering those comments to the province. I am concerned based on everything I hear from staff and developers about the, the potential voluntary nature of pre consultations. And I, I think that we have seen a lot of progress in Perth County in terms of the pre consultation process for development. To make that voluntary and to create sort of new regime wherein there's almost punishment for, for us as the county, as the planning authority, which seems implied here, if, if we're not doing our thing, seems like a foolish endeavor. And so I would suggest that we should offer comments saying that pre consultation works. It works because it helps developers and the planning staff get their ducks in line and ready for the application. And, and it actually expediates things. That's all of the feedback I've heard on that is seems to be positive. And finally, I want to ask a question. I do have a question. With regards to community service facilities and the changes that are proposed in, in this bill, that seems like a pretty big sculpt, just sort of saying, okay, well, there's these, these entities called community service facilities. They can include hospitals, they can include universities and colleges. But just, they can do what they want. I'm sure that there's probably still building permit processes and stuff somewhere sort of downstream from the planning process. But to sort of allow a wild west there doesn't feel right to me. So I want to make sure that I understand that that's how you read and interpret that legislation, that, that hospitals and, and you know, this could potentially apply to medical clinics for all I know, right? I think planning is an important discipline that brings value to our communities and, and creates livable and quality of life oriented communities. And that one leaves me a little bit puzzled. So am I puzzled for good reason?
Through the warden to Counselor Kastenberg's comments. So that's with specifically with respect to the exemption of community services and post secondary institutions for planning act requirements. And then just for everyone's information, in my report, I've, I've listed that that would apply to uses such as schools, hospitals and long term care facilities, and then as well as universities and colleges. So I, I don't disagree. I think that the, the site plan approval process is, is a good process. I think that perhaps this has come out of potentially in larger municipalities, these processes get logged down and these are well, are much needed community service facilities. And so then the idea is to try to expedite them. I don't see that happening here in Perth County. I think that staff move site plan approvals very quickly. And then again, as I pointed out earlier, official plan amendments and zone changes too. I mean, we need all the statutory requirement time for timelines and whatnot too. So I, I don't disagree that I do think they're valuable processes. And I can definitely include comments to, to that effect if, if that's council's direction.
Okay. Just as a follow up, I think that we should offer comments on pre consultation. And I do think that we should offer comments, a sort of a mild expression of concern about community service facilities and the, the possibilities that these, these institutions can go and essentially do things that ignore good planning with very low privilege resting with the planning authority on that. But like, I think that's a concern.
Okay, anyone else? Counselor Duncan?
Thank you, through your word. I'm definitely concerned about this lot creation in prime agricultural areas because it was just very recently that the province decided they were going to have severances of three lots in agricultural areas. And then because of negative feedback, they walked that back. And now this just seems to be an end run around that negative feedback with the ability for those lots to potentially be severed and sterilizing more use of the agricultural land. So I think we need to comment that we're definitely not in favor of that ability to sever those lots. Like I don't have an issue with putting more houses on those farm clusters because I think it's good policy, but the fact that we could sever them is definitely a concern.
Okay, anyone else?
So do we still have an opportunity to bring up new items? Like some, so Matthew Ray was going to have a meeting, a roundtable on this with parliamentary assistance. Then there was a little shuffle there and that got canceled. So we didn't get that opportunity to sit down with them. And, and because I had a couple of staff, Jeff gave me some things that he was concerned with and so did Mike Givens. And maybe I'll just give that to you and, and you can look at it and see if that's already on the radar or not. But I just, we still can send more information in.
I think that roundtable is still to be had, but.
Oh yeah, but it's already now in the works. So I would have, they would have had it before they started sending the information out to the, to the municipalities. So I haven't heard much more about that, so.
Counselor Trenkowski?
Yeah, thanks, Warden, through you. And I support staff's recommendations as well as Counselor Kastenberg's pending amendments to the comments that will be tendered to the province. Different meetings that I've listened or attended or listened to, the province seems to be placing the onus of the planning details such as settlement area expansion and so forth on the municipal, municipal level. And that includes Perth County at the municipal level. So if we're the ones that are going to be responsible for making the planning decisions, then the province has to give us the time to review their proposals and comment on them accordingly. Because if we're the ones doing the work, we're the ones that are dealing with the public. And if we're the ones that have to carry the load, then the province has to listen to us. And this, this assault on the municipalities and the assault on the farmland has got to stop. There's a message that needs to be delivered and it's our job to deliver it and we need the time. Our staff needs the time to deliver that message in its proper fashion. I support staff's recommendations 100%.
Okay, anyone else? Counselor Heskey?
I gotta say this after Counselor Trenkowski's comment. So yeah, there's been an assault on farmland. That assault on farmland is to build homes for people in rural areas. Then yesterday or the day before, I watched an announcement that forget how many hundred acres of prime farmland, they were taken out of production to build Highway 413. And they've got a highway, not very many kilometers south, that called 407. But it's a toll road, so people don't like to use it. Like honest to God, province, if they want to be so restrictive on farmland in Perth South or North Perth or Perth West, they got to look at more of a province wide thing. They seem to be able to still cater to the urban centers. But the lower rural areas are getting kind of kicked in the ear. In my, this is just my thoughts. And I'm getting kind of sick of hearing, oh, you got to preserve farmland, you got to do this, you got to do that. We got a lot of farmland that isn't really farmland. Not so much in this area, but there is farmland and there's land designated agriculture that hasn't been farmed in 30, 40 years and is never going to be farmed. Maybe because of the size of the piece of land, but you know, the bigger equipment, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I think they have to take a more wide scope approach to looking at this.
Okay, anyone else? If not, we have a motion that council receives the initial review of Bill 185, Cutting Red Tape to Build More Homes Act and Draft Provincial Planning Statement 2024 Report. And that council directs county planning staff to prepare and submit comments in response to the provincial consultations on Bill 185 and the proposed provincial planning statement. And that the initial review of Bill 185, Cutting Red Tape to Build More Homes Act and Draft Provincial Planning Statement 2024 Report be circulated to the lower tier municipalities for information. Moved by Counselor Kastenberg?
Can I, can I ask about the amendment to make sure?
You want to add something?
I'd like to ensure that, I'm, I'm advocating, sorry, that we speak to the pre consultation item and we speak to the community service facilities item in our correspondence with the province providing comments. Is that okay to jam it in now?
You got that?
Yes, so through the warden, just some of the notes that I took down to Counselor Kastenberg's points of pre consultations to community service facilities. And then Counselor Duncan as well, with respect to the severing wallets. Just to kind of capture all that works.
Okay, so you move that? Moved by Counselor Kastenberg, second by Counselor Duncan. Any more comments or questions? All in favor? Carried. Okay, and the next item is the development application status for quarter one 2024. Andrea?
Thank you. So this will be even briefer. So this basically what, what we're doing is providing our Q1 stats to council just so council is aware of, of the number of applications that we've been working on. And it's not included that I can give council all this information. So to date, we've processed 46 planning applications. And so that's from January 1st to March 31st. And which is down from 57 in 2023. So the, the difference is, is 11. And then more specifically, North Perth is at 13 as of March 31st. And last year at this time, they had 16. Perth East has 17. Last year at this time, they had 16. Perth South has, has three and last year they had nine. And then West Perth had 13 and, or sorry, West Perth has 13. And then this, last year at this time, they had 16. And then as for processing times, we're continuing to meet the statutory requirements. So, so that's positive. And despite the fact that we have 11 less applications, doesn't seem to really shift the, doesn't seem to change the workload that much. There's still a significant amount of pre consultations and inquiries that are coming in. In addition to that, obviously, we've been working on the official plan. We're also completed the official plan consolidation, which hadn't been done in a number of years. So our, the official plan, when you look it up online, is up to date. So that's fantastic. And then we've also been working on zoning by law consolidations as well. And from that will flow the housekeeping amendments for, for each of the four zoning bylaws. So that's, that's in review right now and we are working on that. And then in addition to that, we are looking at modernizing our processes. So that's, that'll be something key that we'll work on in Q2 and Q3. We're working on cloud permit, which council is well aware of. We are working closely with cloud permit to give them all of our information. We are working closely with cloud permit to give them all of our information and describe all our processes at both the county and then each of the area municipalities. So that'll be, it's, the front end is a significant amount of work, getting them all the information and, and making sure that everything runs smoothly. So that's also how we've been spending our time. And then as council is aware, we've had some staff turnover, which always seems to be somewhat time-consuming. So hopefully we can get up to a full complement and, and maintain our team going forward. So if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on the report? No? Okay, we have a motion that council receives the development application status for quarter one 2024 report for information. Moved by Deputy Warden Callum, second by Counselor Aiterson. All in favor? Carried. Thanks, Andrea. Okay, we're going to move to corporate services. And the first one is the March 2024 Forestry Inspector's Report. And Tyler, your floor is yours.
Thank you. So through the warden, before council is the March 2024 Forestry Inspector's Report, prepared by Perth County Forestry Inspector Marvin Smith. Marvin completed six inspections in response to the submission of the notice of intent and three inspections in response to her question from the landowner. The report is there. If there's any questions, concerns, or inquiries, I'd be happy to pass those on.
Thank you. Any questions on the report? Counselor Orr?
Just wondering if we could change how to find the locations? Because there were a few here that I was seeking out, and yes, I was trying to get on the computer, but can we give the address?
So through the warden, it's something that we've discussed previously. And there is a component of personal information that we don't want to necessarily disclose on all applications. Anything that is submitted in terms of a notice of intent, if there's not any going to be, if there's not going to be any kind of potential litigation, that is something that we could potentially add in here. But it is good to note that there is a bit of variety. We wouldn't necessarily know if there is going to be any litigation on some of these items, but for sure, if there's no issues in terms of the notice of intent being submitted, that information's being provided to the county. So it's something to look at adding.
That would be great.
Okay, anything else? If not, we have a motion that council receives a March 2024 Forestry Inspector's Report for information. Moved by Counselor Duncan, second by Counselor Orr. All in favor? Carried. Thanks, Tyler. Next, we're going to do the quarter one financial variance, and Daniel was with us this morning. Welcome, Daniel. Your floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning, Warden and council. In front of you today is the 2024 Quarter One variance report for the period ending March 31st, 2024. As outlined, overall expenses across the county's divisions are as expected at approximately 25% of the budgeted amounts. Two things to note related to public works. Um, the first thing is winter maintenance has accounted for 50% of its budgeted total. Historically, the counting occurs 60% of the winter maintenance budget in the first quarter and the remaining 40% in the fall and winter season. Therefore, winter maintenance would be under budget by approximately 10%, which is approximately equal to $700,000. Secondly, the county continues to see higher than average wage assessments. As of March 31st, public works has already utilized 55% of the budgeted total. If this trend continues, the over-budgeted amount at the end of year will reduce the surplus I had just mentioned. Um, lastly, majority of the capital projects are not typically completed until the summer months, which explains the low amount of approximately 6% spent up to March 31st. If there are any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Questions of the report, comments? Oh, okay, we have a motion that council receives a 2024 Q1 financial variance report for information. Moved by Counselor McDermott, second by Counselor Orr. All in favor? Carried.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving now to public works. And the first item on public works is the 2024 Stewardship Program results. And I believe Hannah's with us this morning, and John and Bill. Morning, everyone, and welcome. Your floor is yours.
Morning, thank you, Warden, and good morning, councilors. For you, you have a report on the results of the 2024 stewardship program results. This is a co-report between myself and the Chair of the Agricultural Working Group, Dean Trentowski. So I welcome Dean to make an introduction to the report, and we will be delivering a short presentation.
Thanks, Hannah. Warden, I get through you. Yeah, on behalf of the Agricultural Working Group, we're quite pleased to have this report presented to the rest of council today. This has been a collaborative effort starting back in February of 2023 through meetings with the Agricultural Working Group. And I'm quite pleased to say it's been a very collaborative effort, not only with members of council, but also with the three general farm organizations that are members of the working group, but as well as the public and as well as our partners at the various conservation authorities that are parts, that are located within Perth County itself. I think the credit goes to the public for their interest because this program, we asked the public what they wanted, and the tree planting is one of the things that the public indicated they had a great interest in during the public consultation. And, and the details in the report reflect that, to verify that interest. So this is a good news story for Perth County. And I'm quite pleased that we were able to work together and get the details sorted out and initiate a program that looks like it will be very successful in the future. So credit also to our consultant, Mel Limas, who helped us get things organized and get started and facilitated discussions early on. So with that, I will turn the floor back over to our public works staff and they'll lead you through the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. So if you refer to your council package, we're delivering a short presentation today to go over the results of the program and to give you a little snapshot of what we'll be hopefully delivering in 2025. So we're also going to be linking in how these stewardship efforts benefit our county priorities. For my role, the Resiliency and Stewardship Coordinator was brought on on November 1st. On November 15th, we launched the program guide, and December 1st, we opened this program for application. So it was a very quick turnover for the program. And although there was this quick turnover, we were able to have a lot of applications come in during the application period and then have the Agricultural Working Group review the applications that were submitted through an evaluation subcommittee and final working group approval. And then the applicants were notified of their success or not success on February 27th. And as of last week, I was out doing site visits on some of the sites, trees are going in the ground, green side up. So it's been very inspirational to see work started. We had three streams for this year. The first stream is a woodlot, lot stream. So landowners with woodlots could complete a forest management plan with a registered professional forester in order to assess their bushlots, to see how they could make improvements over the next 10 years. We had one request for this stream and they were issued $500. Their forest plan was made this spring and was completed for, again, the next 10 years. And that applicant had lots of fantastic things to say about the program. He was able to actually complete this, this year because of the stewardship program. Excellent. Our next stream was called the Community Stream, and this stream was open to nonprofit groups, municipalities, conservation authorities, and other public charities that were restoring public lands or doing tree distribution programs. So each one of your local municipalities actually submitted an application. And as you can see on this list, these are the projects that we were able to support this year. The pictures below are the West Perth Tree Power Program on the left, and the one on the right is Perth East Morning Dale Centennial Park Restoration, which I believe was completed on Earth Day. We had five requests and we were able to, to award funds to all five of those applicants. Next slide. Finally, we had our landowner stream. This was for landowners who were planting over 50 trees on private property and projects ranged from windbreaks to block plantings and buffers around farmlands. 22 of these applications were through conservation authority programs. And I will give you a little bit more information on that as we go. But we had 39 requests for funds and 77% of the applications we received were for windbreaks. So I know this map is quite small. It's available on our website under perthcounty.ca/stewardship if you're interested in zooming in. It shows where all the applications that we supported are located across the county for this year. And we had a good distribution of projects across the county, most with the highest applications coming out of West Perth. And you can see on the map that there's a cluster just west of Broadhead in there that took up most of those applications. Next slide. So this, our graph shows the total request for 2024. So as you can see, the, the request is in green and it's divided by private stream, community stream, and woodlot stream. We had 75 grand available and we had a total request of over $101,000 to support projects. Now, this translates to a total project value of almost $277,000 worth of investment in stewardship in our county, which is phenomenal for the first year with such a short time for advertisement in the program. Next slide. So as we were significantly oversubscribed to the program, we were able to maintain consistency between what, how much was requested and how much we actually distributed across the streams between the private community and woodlot streams. Next slide. And the expense claim types are shown here in this pie graph. So 62% of the applicant cost was for trees and shrubs. And then planting labor, site prep and protection and other costs were the remaining amount. So as you can see in the picture to the left, it's important in a lot of areas to complete site preparation and protection to ensure that trees have the best chance of survival, especially in areas where there's no trees surrounding it. This is a short synopsis of the tangible results of the program. So we had 20.6 kilometers worth of windbreaks planted through the program, 10.45 acres of marginal lands were reforested, including parklands. We planted just shy of 15,000 trees, and these trees will sequester just shy of 42,000 kilograms of carbon per year, which is very substantial. If you compare that to the greenhouse gas emissions of the county, these trees alone would offset county emissions by 4.7% for 2024. Next slide. We've been doing some program awareness and outreach currently on the results of the 2024 program and to also give a little breadcrumb trail leading up to our 2025 offering. So I was a guest speaker at the Drinking Water Source Protection Committee, and last Saturday I was able to attend the Huron Perth chapter of the Ontario Woodlot Association as their guest speaker. We've had numerous news articles published in local papers about the project and celebrating the success. And I will note that when I was able to share the results of the stewardship program for 2024 with the Woodlot Association, there were audible gasps in the room about the success, and multiple people came up to me after saying, kudos to Perth County for finally making this investment and this leap towards stewardship. A lot of those people were coming from Huron County where their program's been in life for 20 years. So for us to finally take the leap and do that as well, they were very pleased to hear, to hear that. Next slide. So 2025, things are only going to get bigger and brighter. So we plan to release the new 2025 guide in October with the application period opening in November and closing in January. And then we plan to have a similar timeline next, next year, January to February with reviewing the applications that have been received and notifying applicants with final reports being due in August. Next slide. The Agricultural Working Group took great strides to ensure that the project is being adaptively managed as we learn from the intake that we had this year. So there will be a couple of similarities and a couple of changes to the 2025 stewardship program. The landowner stream will have grants that can cover 50% of eligible project costs up to three grand. The woodlot stream will cover 75% of eligible project costs up to $750. And the community stream, the grant can cover 100% of eligible project costs up to five grand. Labor costs will be removed from all eligible expenses in all grant streams. And site preparation and tree planting, sorry, tree protection costs remain in the landowner stream. So we'll see as we go through the next couple of years, as we continue to learn and grow through the project, how we can best meet the needs of the applicants in the best interests of the county. Next slide. So the 2025 program, we will have a lot more time and lead up to do awareness campaigns with education and outreach events. The community stream applicants will have time to fill out programs. I know when I was talking to some members of the community, nonprofit groups, and even municipalities, they had dreams for projects, but they just didn't have enough time to put an application together last year. So this will afford them time to put those dreams to action. And now woodlot owners will be more aware of the grant opportunity for their woodlot management plans. The Agricultural Working Group will be recommending council increase program support in 2025, but that decision will come later this year. There's no decision to be made today. Next slide. And I just wanted to touch on that stat I shared about carbon sequestration. So as we continue to invest in tree planting, those trees will continue to sequester carbon year over year. So we have a compound interest, if you will, of carbon sequestration value over the years. So in the small chart below, you'll see the number of trees planted year over year as like conservative estimate of what we can support to plant. We will have an exponential increase in the carbon that we can sequester across the landscape. Next slide. And now I open it up to questions through your warden, and I'm more than happy to discuss any possibilities with you or your teams.
Okay, thanks, Hannah. Questions of the report? Counselor Kastenberg?
Thank you for the report. Some very interesting work beginning to emerge there. While there are a whole lot of questions that are technical, and I'll save council and speak directly to team, I do have a question about the woodlot management stream. I did take note in work from Maitland Conservation that their assessment of forest cover and woodlots in its capture area showed that there was 19% of, of trees were dead stock. And so clearly we have a significant loss of trees, largely attributed to Emerald Ash Bor, but, and I think we knew that. So we're losing trees at a pretty fantastic rate, it would appear, over the last few years, based on Maitland Conservation data. I'm looking at Counselor Duncan because he's probably more familiar with this than I am. But I, I find that it's interesting that we only saw one applicant this year. And I suppose I'm, I'm asking, do you intend to sort of enrich outreach to those in the county who own woodlots to encourage them to seek funding through that woodlot management stream so that we can begin to address some of the challenges that we're seeing in our woodlots and natural forested areas?
Thank you for the question. Yeah, I, I think that there is a growing concern on the condition of woodlots between landowners, and they see the progression that's happened now that the ash bor has come through and those trees have officially. those trees have officially lost all their leaves and they're now dead stands. I believe that a lot of the folks that own woodlands like that, that have intention on doing sustainable forest harvesting methods are encouraged to do so because of registered forest management plans. In the case of the individual who was successful through our grant program to complete his, he was able to create a 10-year scope on what was harvestable in his woodlot. That could be income generating for him and also what stewardship actions he should complete in order to restore the forest after that harvest is done. So it's a benefit to the landowner and it's also a benefit to the environment because they can sustainably manage their forest with a harvest and the environment also is able to thrive as it goes through that transition period.
Okay. Yep, keep going.
Will we expand our outreach to some degree to try to focus on this program and encourage landowners in Perth County who have woodlots to participate?
Yes, so that was part of the reason why I spoke at the AGM last weekend was to increase awareness of the program. There was over 40 people in attendance to that. And I hope that through more outreach that I have planned throughout the year, that will gain more momentum in the awareness. And we also increased the eligible funds for that grant stream by $250 to also help as an incentive for folks to complete woodlot management plans.
Okay, other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion that council receives. Oh, sorry, Council Trunkowski.
Through you, Warden, just a final summation, just to, thanks to Hannah for her hard work in getting this program started on a short timeline as she has indicated. And thanks to Sarah Franklin and CAO Lori Wolf for helping us in the initial stages before Hannah arrived at the county to carry on with the program. And thanks to John and Bill for their continued support of the program as we go into the future. And I think it's something, as I mentioned before, it's a win for Perth County and it's something everyone, council staff and the public can be proud of achieving so far. Lots of work to do, but excellent start. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? If not, then we do have a motion that council receives a 2024 stewardship program results report for information. Moved by Council Trunkowski, second by Council Duncan. All in favor? Carry. Thanks Hannah. Okay, now we're going to move to the RFP results, road rationalization consultant. Bill and John, what is yours?
Thank you, Warden Eggers. Good morning, council. Back in 2020, county council approved a road rationalization process and framework, which is intended to assign ownership and responsibility for certain roads to the most appropriate municipal authority. Earlier this year, we received road submissions by North Perth and Perth South to be considered under this process. Since this is the first iteration of the road rationalization process, we recommend engaging the services of a consultant to provide subject matter expertise and guidance through the evaluation. This report summarizes the results of the request for proposal, which was issued on March 22nd and closed on April 15th. There were eight plantakers, but only one submission. Staff have reviewed the proposal from Tatum Engineering and are satisfied that the consultant will bring expertise, knowledge, and value to our road rationalization process. Tatum is based in Collingwood, Ontario, and has consulted on similar rationalization processes for Gray County, Dufferin County, and the District of Muskoka. Staff contacted Tatum Engineering to discuss their work plan and related experience. And it was noted the importance of working collaboratively with both the upper and lower tier municipalities through this process. There can be significant impacts and implications, both financially and operationally, depending on the recommendations and results of the road evaluation process. This is where Tatum's experience will be valuable in informing and guiding the committee and councils through the process. The report outlines Tatum Engineering's fee structure, which indicates a total project cost of $38,600 plus HST. While under the procurement policy, the Director of Public Works can execute the agreement, these costs were not specifically identified in the 2024 approved budget. Therefore, staff are seeking council's approval to engage the services of Tatum Engineering Limited and direct staff to execute an agreement. Be happy to answer your questions.
Okay, thanks, John. Questions or comments? No? Okay, we have a motion that council receives the RFP results, road rationalization consultant report, and that council approves the proposal for Tatum Engineering Limited to provide consulting services for the road rationalization process, and that council directs staff to execute an agreement with Tatum Engineering Limited. Moved by Council Kastner, second by Council McKenzie. All in favor? Carry. Okay, then the next one, tender results, St. Mary's PS base roof replacement.
Thank you, Warden Eggers. This report is for council's information and summarizes the tender results for the replacement of the shingle roof at the St. Mary's Pedantic Paramedic Services Base. There were nine submissions for the laminated asphalt shingle replacement with the results tabled in the report. Applied Contracting Limited out of Petersburg, Ontario is the low bidder at a cost of $32,500 plus HST. Staff have not previously worked with this contractor, but have contacted references which indicated they can successfully complete the project. One of those references was the town of St. Mary's where Applied Contracting replaced a roof at one of their wheelhouses. It should be noted that the bid included a unit price for the removal and replacement of plywood roof substrate should any of the existing roof sheeting be found to be in poor condition. The low bid from Applied Contracting Limited is under budget and under the procurement policy, the purchase and agreement is executable by the CAO. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Questions of the report, Council Duncan?
How many square feet is this roof?
Good question, I should know that. I'd have to get back to you.
Okay. Just seems like they're considerably cheaper than everyone else.
I guess, Warden, yes, we did contact the contractor to ensure that they could supply under the specifications and the price that they submitted, and they confirmed that.
And this includes the, the more venting for the roof as well?
There will be additional, there will be, yeah, that's included in the specifications and scope of the project.
Okay. And one last question. The standing seam, I'm thinking, probably was considerably more money than, than the fiberglass shingles?
Through the warden, considerably. Can actually hear that question.
Can you ask the question again? You never asked the question again, Jim couldn't hear.
Sorry, Jim, I was just asking John if the, the standing seam steel was considerably higher in price than the fiberglass shingle replacement.
Well, that was funny, that was going to be my question. Because in all honesty, that is such a low pitched roof. You see how little lifespan you get out of your first shingles? I'm not a huge fan of these fiberglass. Yes, that steel roof would have cost you considerably more, but it would have counted as twice the first and the last time you fixed it. Like, you're going to be replacing this roof a bunch of times, spending that much and more money. I honestly would have went with the steel roof. That's just my opinion. And I know it's more money, but there's a reason that's more money.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Now, we have a motion that council receives a tender results, St. Mary's PS base roof replacement report for information. Moved by Council McDermott, second. Council Trunkowski. All those in favor? Carry. Okay, and then the next report is tender results for the bridge structure rehabilitations.
Thank you, Warden Eggers. Good morning, council. Through you, Warden. Construction tender was issued for capital project BC 0054, which is a rehabilitation of bridge structure 044180 on Perth Line 44, just east of Highway 23, as well as capital project BC 0056, which is a rehabilitation of bridge structure 135018, known as the Wiki Bridge on Perth Road 135, would be just south of Perth Line 36. Both are rigid frame concrete bridge structures constructed in 1960s. They require similar repair work. Given the similarities in construction scope and the location of the bridge structures, we combined both projects under the cover of one tender. The project involves the removal and replacement of concrete sections to facilitate patch repairs to the structure's decktop, soffit, railing, abutments, and portions of the wing wall. Waterproofing, paving, and guiderail improvements are also included under the scope of work for these projects. The bid opportunity was posted on the county's website. We had 27 plantakers and seven submissions before the bid closing on April 18th. Summary of the bid results is provided in the report along with the recommendation to award tender 2024-031-05, Bridge Structure Rehabilitation 044180 and 1350118 to Engineered Concrete Limited for their tendered price of $896,856.40, which represents a low bid submission received. Engineered Concrete has worked for the county in the past. In 2021, they completed the rehabilitation of two bridge structures, one north of Millbank on Perth Road 121 and the other on Perth Road 131, just north of Line 80. Both projects were completed successfully and they were similar scope to the work under this contract. Staff have no concerns with the contractor's ability to fill the obligations of this contract. The tender documents were also reviewed by our consulting engineer and they came to the same conclusion that the submission is acceptable contractually. Engineered Concrete submission is within the budget, which is combined to be $1,030,000. The tender price does include a $77,000 contingency, which will apply to both projects as well. So they, they're about 12 to 15% under budget on each project. We don't have a definitive start date. Traffic will be maintained and managed through traffic lights restricting through the work zone. And as I said, I don't have a construction schedule yet, but indications are that this work will be completed in the summer of this year. Any questions, I would be happy to answer.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of the report? Seeing no questions, we have a motion that council receives a tender results, 2024-031-05, Bridge Structure Rehabilitation 044180 and 135018 report, and that council award tender 2024-031-05 to the Engineered Concrete Limited, and that council authorize the warden and the clerk to execute the agreement between the Corporation of the County of Perth and the Engineered Concrete Limited. Need a mover and a seconder? Moved by Council Trunkowski, second by Council Aijison. All in favor? Carry. Thanks very much. John, go ahead.
Warden, if I may, just a reminder to council that May 16th, which is our next council meeting, will be the Roads and Facilities Tour. Just, while I haven't quite got the itinerary nailed down, we will be meeting at the Milverton Public Works Yard, just south of the town of Milverton. Boarding a bus, we'll be heading north to see a few locations, north, and then west and down to Mitchell for lunch. And then the big thing will be heading to the Courthouse Campus where we'll go see the elevator, the renovation, and a few other things at that location. Us will be heading back to Milverton, hopefully get you there before 3:00 P.M.
Okay, hopefully everyone can join us that day. Okay, that's it. Thanks Hannah, Bill, and John.
Oh, and just one last thing, sorry. Since we're going through the construction project, we do have hard hats for you. If you just, no flip flops or anything, Mr. Kellum. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is council reports, and there's my warden activity report where I was for the month of April. There are, when I send this in, I had good intentions of going, but the MPP day with Perth County Federation, unfortunately, I did not get to that. I had to be in a tractor that day, so it didn't work out for me to get to it. And the one item I missed, there's also another county update with the CAO and deputy warden on the 29th of April that I didn't put on there, so. Is there any questions on where I've been or what I did? If not, we have a motion that council receives the warden's activity report, April 2024 report for information. Moved by Deputy Warden Kellum, second by Council Orr. All in favor? Carry. Okay, we're down to bylaws. We have two bylaws this morning. The first one being that bylaw 3977-2024, be read a first, second, and third time, finally passed the second day of May 2024. And this is in regards to the public works agreement execution. I need a mover and a seconder? Council McKenzie, second by Council Duncan. All in favor? Carry. The second bylaw is bylaw 3978-2024, to be read a first, second, and third time, finally passed the second day of May 2024. And this is for the delegation of authority for planning. Need a mover and a seconder? Moved by Council Orr, second by Council Trunkowski. All those in favor? Carry. Okay, do we have any notice of motions? Any other business? Announcements? We do have a closed session. So we have a motion that the Perth County Council move into closed session at approximately 10:27 a.m. in accordance with Section 239 of the Municipal Act SO.2001.C.25 to consider a matter pertaining to labor relations identifiable individual under public works. We have, moved by Council McDermott, second by Council Aijison. All in favor? Carry. Okay, thanks to everyone else. We'll take a few minute break and then we'll come back and carry on. We do have a bylaw, 3979-2024, being a bylaw to confirm the presidians of council of the Corporation of the County of Perth that its regular meeting held on May 2nd, 2024 is read a first, second, and third time, is finally passed this May 2nd, 2024. Moved by Council McDermott, second by Council Aijison. All in favor? Carry. And the last motion of the morning, that council be adjourned at 10:51 a.m. By Council Trunkowski, second by Council Orr. All in favor? Carry. Thanks, everyone. Enjoy the rest of your day.